Everything we have, we have for after audit.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October Audit Committee meeting. We are going to get started. I'll ask you to please take your seats. Oh, yes. Yeah. Forgot about that. Yeah. We doing the pledge now or we do it at the general meeting? Okay. All right. So we have with us tonight Mr. Chris Schneider from the R.S. Abrams. That is our internal audit company. Chris, come on up.
Hello. Okay, great. So again, my name is Chris Schneider. I'm from R.S. Abrams. We're the internal auditors for this district. What was presented earlier in the Audit Committee meeting, or the session prior to this Board of Ed meeting, was three reports that we issued this year. There are two cycle reports, which are intensive deep dives into a particular area, meaning processes, procedures, et cetera, and some testing that we do, as well as what we call a risk assessment update report. So again, per NYSED regulations and requirements, we do this risk assessment update on an annual basis and then the district elects to engage us to do two cycle reports, again, a very deep dive into particular areas. That risk assessment update report is a lot higher level across a spectrum of different processes and procedures. And again, from those reports, we provide the district with some recommendations based on our findings and observations and then give them, again, recommendations and things to work and things to work on going forward and things to work on going forward that we'd recommend that they put into place. that we'd recommend that they put into place. So this year, we looked at two cycles, So this year, we looked at two cycles, those being facilities maintenance and information technology. those being facilities maintenance and information technology. Again, these are selected based on conversations Again, these are selected based on conversations with the board, with management, with the board, with management, and based on our risk assessments. and based on our risk assessments. From that, we had a series of findings and recommendations, From that, we had a series of findings and recommendations, which are detailed in the report, which are detailed in the report, which, again, was discussed prior to this meeting. which, again, was discussed prior to this meeting. And then additionally, from that risk assessment update, And then additionally, from that risk assessment update, we have similarly findings and recommendations. we have similarly findings and recommendations. And again, there will be determinations made And again, there will be determinations made for what will be done in fiscal year '26 for what will be done in fiscal year '26 in terms of those intensive cycle reviews. in terms of those intensive cycle reviews. With that, I'll pause to see if there's any questions from anyone. With that, I'll pause to see if there's any questions from anyone. Sure. Sure.
Ms. Lewis, come on up to the microphone. Ms. Lewis, come on up to the microphone.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Rochelle Lewis. My name is Rochelle Lewis. Did you say you identified some risk assessments Did you say you identified some risk assessments during the audit in that report? during the audit in that report?
Yes. Yes.
Or was it presented only to the board? Or was it presented only to the board?
No, those will be publicly available. No, those will be publicly available. So they'll get posted on the website, So they'll get posted on the website, and they get submitted to the New York State Education Department, and they get submitted to the New York State Education Department, the results of those reports. the results of those reports.
And can you define what fiscal year '26 And can you define what fiscal year '26 actually means actually means in terms for your audit cycle? in terms for your audit cycle?
Sure. Sure. Yeah, so that would mean from July 1st, 2025, Yeah, so that would mean from July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. through June 30th, 2026. So if you're asking for prior year, So if you're asking for prior year, the one I'm speaking to right now, the one I'm speaking to right now, that would be from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. that would be from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025.
But you presented the risk assessments already, But you presented the risk assessments already, so you will be identifying, so you will be identifying, the risks that were identified from the previous period the risks that were identified from the previous period is going to be taken in consideration for this fiscal. is going to be taken in consideration for this fiscal.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. So the way it works is that we do the work that I just mentioned, So the way it works is that we do the work that I just mentioned, and then in aggregate, you consider all of the various areas, and then in aggregate, you consider all of the various areas, processes, procedures, our risk determinations around those areas. processes, procedures, our risk determinations around those areas. You develop a plan for next year You develop a plan for next year in terms of those cycles that you would then look at. in terms of those cycles that you would then look at. So areas to do what we call a deep dive, So areas to do what we call a deep dive, so it's looking specifically at certain areas, so it's looking specifically at certain areas, certain risks, et cetera. certain risks, et cetera.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee?
I have a question. I have a question. In the report on information technology, In the report on information technology, from the Procedures Performed section, from the Procedures Performed section, there was mention of two selected locations there was mention of two selected locations on page three of that area on page three of that area that verified physical controls. that verified physical controls. What two selections were the observations done at? What two selections were the observations done at?
Sure. Sure.
What two locations, I'm sorry. What two locations, I'm sorry.
I sent those in an email. I sent those in an email. Do you want to pull my laptop up? Do you want to pull my laptop up? Because I can go through those series of questions Because I can go through those series of questions that we've discussed. that we've discussed. So there's, again, I know there's multiple elementary schools here. So there's, again, I know there's multiple elementary schools here. We get selected two of those six. We get selected two of those six. Again, that's just based on random sampling. Again, that's just based on random sampling. Typically, in any sort of audit, Typically, in any sort of audit, you're not going to do 100% of testing of anything. you're not going to do 100% of testing of anything.
All right. All right. Yep, you sure can. Yep, you sure can.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good. Hi, good.
On pages four and five, it addressed high priority work orders. On pages four and five, it addressed high priority work orders. I wanted to know what measures I wanted to know what measures will ensure will ensure high priority work orders high priority work orders are addressed are addressed within reasonable time frames? within reasonable time frames. What did you? What did you?
So again, we're not defining what should be So again, we're not defining what should be high versus medium versus low. high versus medium versus low. Our recommendation there is that Our recommendation there is that the Helix Intel system that the district utilizes the Helix Intel system that the district utilizes can be utilized to set priority orders. can be utilized to set priority orders. And our recommendation is essentially And our recommendation is essentially that there be purposeful levels of priority attributed to tasks that there be purposeful levels of priority attributed to tasks such that high priority tasks can be dealt with first. such that high priority tasks can be dealt with first. For example, well, actually, a pretty good example For example, well, actually, a pretty good example that gives some context here, right? that gives some context here, right? So as part of our work, I was added to get access to that system. So as part of our work, I was added to get access to that system. As a result of having access to that system, As a result of having access to that system, I get emails probably every 30 minutes I get emails probably every 30 minutes for various requests around different work orders. for various requests around different work orders. So the recommendation is specifically around, So the recommendation is specifically around, can the staff and the director of facilities can the staff and the director of facilities properly attribute levels of priority properly attribute levels of priority so that, again, if something is an emergency, it's done first? so that, again, if something is an emergency, it's done first? If something's super low priority If something's super low priority and doesn't need to be done right now, and doesn't need to be done right now, that it's given the right level of priority that it's given the right level of priority so that, again, the resources are most effectively used so that, again, the resources are most effectively used and time, you know, most effectively spent. and time, you know, most effectively spent.
Anyone else? Anyone else? So in the district's corrective action plan, So in the district's corrective action plan, there were a couple of post-dated corrective actions there were a couple of post-dated corrective actions for March 2026 and December 31st, 2025. for March 2026 and December 31st, 2025. Do you all come back to get a mid-year status? Do you all come back to get a mid-year status? Or do you just revisit those when you come back at the, Or do you just revisit those when you come back at the, at next year, if you're appointed again? at next year, if you're appointed again?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, good question. So typically, the way it works is, again, So typically, the way it works is, again, we're talking about those two cycle reports, we're talking about those two cycle reports, and then also the risk assessment update and then also the risk assessment update that happens on an annual basis. that happens on an annual basis. So in terms of following up on those findings So in terms of following up on those findings from one report to the next year, from one report to the next year, we will definitely be looking at that, we will definitely be looking at that, at the very least, in advance of this meeting, at the very least, in advance of this meeting, so within a year. so within a year. But if the ask is to do that more frequently or sooner, But if the ask is to do that more frequently or sooner, we can certainly do that. we can certainly do that. Again, we will comment next year specifically, Again, we will comment next year specifically, which you'll also see in current year's report. which you'll also see in current year's report. At the very end, there's a Status of Prior Year Findings Report section. At the very end, there's a Status of Prior Year Findings Report section. We do specifically touch upon, We do specifically touch upon, here's what we touched upon last year, here's what we touched upon last year, here's what we think needed to be implemented and addressed, here's what we think needed to be implemented and addressed, and then here's the status of that implementation, and then here's the status of that implementation, whether it was implemented, not implemented, partially, et cetera. whether it was implemented, not implemented, partially, et cetera.
That's all I have. That's all I have. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Anyone from the audience? From the committee? From the committee? All right. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Stein. Thank you so much, Mr. Stein.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
We can't go into public. We can't go into public. Yeah. Yeah. We got five minutes. We got five minutes. So this concludes the Audit Committee meeting, So this concludes the Audit Committee meeting, but we can't open the public committee until eight o'clock. but we can't open the public committee until eight o'clock. So hang out with us for five minutes. So hang out with us for five minutes. All right? All right? Yes. Yes. Oh, I don't have a motion for that. Oh, I don't have a motion for that. You have it? You have it? Okay. Okay. So don't, yeah, all right. So don't, yeah, all right.
I move that the Audit Committee recommend I move that the Audit Committee recommend to the Board of Education to the Board of Education the acceptance of the internal audit report the acceptance of the internal audit report on information technology completed by R S Abrams. on information technology completed by R S Abrams.
Moved. Moved.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I move that the Audit Committee recommend I move that the Audit Committee recommend to the Board of Education to the Board of Education the acceptance of the internal audit report the acceptance of the internal audit report on facilities maintenance. on facilities maintenance. I move that the Audit Committee recommend I move that the Audit Committee recommend to the Board of Education to the Board of Education the acceptance of the internal audit report the acceptance of the internal audit report on facilities maintenance completed by R S Abrams. on facilities maintenance completed by R S Abrams.
Moved. Moved.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Okay. I move that the Audit Committee recommend I move that the Audit Committee recommend to the Board of Education to the Board of Education the approval of the corrective action plan the approval of the corrective action plan for the internal audit report for the internal audit report on information technology completed by R S Abrams. on information technology completed by R S Abrams.
Moved. Moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Okay. I move that the Audit Committee recommend I move that the Audit Committee recommend to the Board of Education to the Board of Education the approved corrective action plan the approved corrective action plan for the internal audit report for the internal audit report on facilities maintenance completed by R S Abrams. on facilities maintenance completed by R S Abrams.
Moved. Moved.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And lastly, I move that the Audit Committee recommend And lastly, I move that the Audit Committee recommend to the Board of Education to the Board of Education the approval of the corrective action plan the approval of the corrective action plan for the risk assessment update report for the risk assessment update report completed by R S Abrams. completed by R S Abrams. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the Audit Committee. That concludes the Audit Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, how are we doing on time? All right, how are we doing on time? We still have three minutes, We still have three minutes, so we can't start the public meeting until eight o'clock. so we can't start the public meeting until eight o'clock. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome everyone to the regular Board of Education. Pat, am I loud enough this time? Am I good on sound? Yeah? No? No, he said I wasn't loud enough. How's my sound? Okay. What were you saying? Okay, okay. You can start. Good evening, everyone. I'm Cynthia Kasim, the very proud principal of the Dutch Broadway School. Welcome you to September's board meeting. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, well, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll turn the mic over to Ms. Tiffany Capers, Board President.
Thank you, Ms. Kasim. Does she clarify that the record reflect that all board members are present? May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the irregular meeting of August 19? Thank you, Mr. Palmer, second. Thank you, Mr. Ramos. All in favor? Motion carries. Do we have any correspondence? Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September board meeting. As we begin a new year, I want to extend a warm and energetic welcome to all of our students, staff, and families. I'd also like to offer a sincere thank you to everyone who worked over the summer, whether you supported our summer programs, which you'll hear more about later this evening, or if you contributed to our building renovations. Your dedication is always appreciated by the Board of Education. We are very excited and looking forward to this year. It will be filled with learning, happiness, and success. So again, thank you for all that you do, and here's to a great school year ahead. Thank you. May I have the high school report?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry. Good evening, Elmont Union Free School District community. Welcome back to a brand-new school year. We hope all of our families had a restful and joyful summer, and we're excited to begin this new chapter with energy, excellence, and Elmont pride. Here's what's been happening in our high schools to kick off the 2025-2026 school year. Elmont Memorial High School is beaming with pride. The class of 2025 earned a whopping $7.3 million in scholarship awards, including one student recognized as a prestigious Gates Millennium Scholar. That is legacy in the making. We kicked things off early with a welcoming seventh-grade orientation on August 25th, helping our newest Spartans start strong. The building officially reopened on Tuesday, September 2nd, and the scholars are already adapting well to the new no-cell phone policy. It's been a great start to away-for-the-day. Meet the Teacher Night is right around the corner on Thursday, September 18th, with both an afternoon and evening session to accommodate families. Invitations have been sent, and we're excited to build strong partnerships with parents. Mark your calendars for homecoming on Saturday, October 25th. The parade steps off at 11:45 a.m., followed by our big game against Valley Stream North at 1 p.m. Let's Go Spartans. Over the summer, Sewanica High School stayed vibrant with activity. The counseling department hosted a college boot camp guiding scholars as they begin their post-secondary journeys. Families of the incoming class of 2031 also visited to explore the building and meet our team. The Sewanica Key Club rolled up their sleeves, beautifying the school courtyard and pond, while music filled the air during the district's summer concert series held on the lawn of central administration. The class of 2026 started the school year with a heartwarming senior sunrise, gathering together early in the morning to celebrate the start of their final year, a beautiful tradition to begin a memorable chapter. Flora Park High School had a smooth and seamless school opening, and students are adjusting well to the district-wide cell phone policy. The away-for-the-day approach is making a positive impact. Our fall sports teams are off and running. Go Knights! We're looking forward to a spirited season filled with teamwork and pride. Meet the Teacher Night will be held on Thursday, September 18th, and families have already received communication to help them prepare for an engaging and informative meeting. As we begin this new academic year, we wish all our students, families, faculty, and staff a year filled with learning, growth, and success. Let's make 2025-2026 unforgettable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Are there any audience members who'd like to speak on agenda items only? Well, now I'll have a presentation from our superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's board meeting. Since our last board meeting in August, we had the opportunity on September 2nd to have our superintendent's conference day, where we welcomed back our faculty and staff. As a matter of fact, Mrs. Capers was there to welcome our teachers back to the new school year. And then on September 3rd, we welcomed 3,400 wonderful scholars back to school with all their hopes and dreams packed nicely in their backpacks, and we are looking forward to a very successful school year. I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank our teachers, to thank our administrators, our clerical staff, our teachers' aides, our custodial staff, our food services department staff, who all worked very hard to welcome our students back to a very smooth opening of school and to do what we believe will be an indication for this school year, a very successful and exciting school year for our students and teachers. So thank you to everyone who worked hard over the summer to get our buildings up and ready for students and teachers, and thank you to everyone who were so instrumental in helping us to have a very smooth opening for the school year. Want to remind our parents that our Meet the Teacher Night, our open school nights, are coming up, and we encourage you to take the opportunity to meet with your students' teachers, to get an overview of our curriculum, our expectations, and how we could partner together to ensure that our students will have a successful year. On September 10th, which is tomorrow, will be open school night for Alden Terrace. On Tuesday, September 16th, we invite our parents from Covert Avenue and Street Manor to meet for open school night. And on Thursday, September 18th, Clara H. Carlson, Dutch Broadway and Gotham Avenue Schools will have their opening school nights, and we encourage you to attend and to hear from our principals and our teachers. I would also like to thank the many teachers and administrators who worked over the summer to support our scholars in our summer enrichment programs and our extended school-year programs. And so tonight, I have some of those individuals here who will give the board and the community an overview of those two programs. And I'm going to introduce Mrs. Rita Johnson and Mrs. Magarachi, who saw and worked with the enrichment program, also Mrs. Wallfall and Mrs. Trioni, who did the extended school-year program. And immediately following those presentations, we will hear from some of our administrative leadership in the district, who will give you an overview of our curriculum and instruction programs and new initiatives that we are implementing for the school year. But before we do so, we also want to honor and pay tribute to a few retirees who have given years of yeoman service to our school district. And so I would like to introduce Dr. Macias, who will talk about our retirees.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Good evening, members of the board, colleagues, and guests. Tonight, it is both an honor and a privilege to recognize three remarkable individuals whose dedication, service, and leadership have helped shape the daily experiences of countless students in our district. We begin with Ms. Celeste Lloyd, our school lunch manager. Ms. Celeste Lloyd is retiring after 22 years of service to our district. Celeste has been the heart of our food service program, ensuring not only that our students are nourished, but that they are cared for with kindness and consistency. Her leadership, attention to detail, and commitment to excellence have set a high standard, and her absence will surely be felt in every cafeteria she touched. Next, we honor Maria Toscano, Assistant Cook at Clara H. Carlson School. Ms. Toscano has dedicated 28 years of service to our district. Maria's presence in the kitchen has always gone beyond preparing meals. She created a warm, welcoming environment for our students and staff alike. Her work may have often taken place behind the scenes, but her impact has always been front and center. And finally, we celebrate Mr. Eric Peels, a dedicated bus driver in our transportation department. Mr. Peels has given 18 years of safe, reliable service to the children of our community. Rain or shine, Eric has been a calm and steady presence behind the wheel, ensuring that thousands of rides to and from school were not only safe, but were welcoming. So to Celeste, Maria, and Eric, on behalf of the Board of Education, the administration, and the entire Elmont community, we extend our deepest appreciation for your years of service, your unwavering commitment, and the legacy of care you leave behind. We wish you joy, rest, and the many rewards of a well-earned retirement. Congratulations.
I now present to you Mrs. Rita Johnson, Mrs. Magarachi, and also Mrs. Wallfall and Mrs. Trioni.
My name is Samantha Magarachi, and I'm honored to share and present a small glimpse into two wonderful programs that occurred in Elmont over the summer. They were the Summer Academic Enrichment Program, led by co-principals myself, Ms. Rita Johnson, Assistant Principal Ms. Ariel Parisi, our administrative intern Ms. Lindsay Becetta, and our Extended School Year Program by Principals Ms. Stacia Wallfall, Ms. Jessica Trioni, Dr. Karen Green, and Mrs. Mary Nettoli. So these programs welcomed 575 of our scholars. The Extended School Year Program ran from July 1st to August 11th, and our Academic Summer Enrichment Program ran from July 1st to July 24th. And now we're going to share with you some wonderful experience that has occurred in these two programs over the summer. So I'm going to start with the Summer Academic Enrichment Program, which was located this year at the Covert Avenue School. Our application went live on May 22nd after board approval, and in two weeks, we received 501 applications, all of those we were able to enroll in the program. As you can see, our daily attendance rates were at 70% for our 20 sections of grades K through 5, and we also had one pre-K bridge program that consisted of 16 students. It would not have been possible without the wonderful transportation department that we have, which were enabling to shuttle those students to and from their home schools and to the GYO program at the Dutch Broadway School this summer. So there was a lot going on this summer in our programs, and we're so excited about them. We were able to continue to provide education with our English Language Arts, math, and science programs. We reviewed material that students had learned and were able to preview content that would be in the next grade after. We proudly continued our STEAM Read-Allow challenges with two new texts this year, Rosie Rivia the Engineer and Violet the Pilot, to support our air travel theme. We also provided many enrichment opportunities, which we were able to expand on. As you can see, we expanded our social-emotional learning program. Our Lego Robotics was expanded in multiple grades due to the very talented Ms. Mary Jane Havilcraft, who is a Dutch Broadway professional here. We had STEAM art in grades Prue K to 1. Cardio music was brought in by Ms. Rachel Felix this summer. Spanish was brought in by Ms. Malina for grades 2 and 3. Mr. Julie expanded from where he was in grade 5 and incorporated grade 4 this summer for stock market literacy, and we had drones by Mr. McBain, enriching each child's day with all these activities.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Johnson. I serve as the co-principal of the Summer Academic Enrichment Program. This summer, we had new initiatives, which was something that Mr. Small wanted us to do, field trips. I've been working this program for seven years, and it was a great experience to add this. So we had onsite math-science, and we also had off-site strips, sandy lanes, and the cradle of aviation. So that was wonderful, and the kids had a great time. We had very good feedback from parents. Our program events, on Week 2, we had Field Day. The children were so excited to spend time outside doing different physical activities, and that was led by Ms. Bennett and Mr. Johnson. On Week 3, we had Spirit Week. The kids went to Washington, D.C. They wore red, white, and blue. Then they went to Florida. Then they stopped at California. They wore beach wear, and then they went back home to Elmont, and they wore their home-school spirit wear. During the summer academic program, we made four newsletters, and thank you very much, Ms. Rumpel and Ms. Havilcraft, for coordinating that effort. It was a collaborative effort between teachers, administration, and the tech team. Please visit the website so that you could read all of them. I can't go through in detail. This is just the first page. We highlighted every week different activities that our children engaged in. So cardio music was one of the initiatives that we had, and we were so proud. Ms. Felix is a regular classroom teacher, and we asked her if she could dance for the students, and she was very happy to do so. And the students had a great time doing cardio music. And thank you very much. This would not be possible without the commitment and dedication of all our staff and teachers that come back every single year to work this program. Thank you.
My name is Stacia Wallfall, and I'm the principal of the Clara H. Carlson School. I'm here along with Mrs. Trioni. We had an opportunity to supervise the Extended School Year Program, which is different than the enrichment. You mentioned, the ladies mentioned, that parents signed up for enrichment. With Extended School Year, there is no sign-up. This program is offered to our scholars that have IEPs, Individual Educational Plans, and at their annual review meeting at the end of the school year, it's recommended whether or not they need an extra six weeks of service to help maintain their abilities so that when they get into this new school year, they haven't lost some of the things that we've taught them. So this year, we had 98 students enrolled, although there are a few more students that could have been a part, but maybe they decided to travel or spend time with their family. We ran for six weeks from 9:30 to 2:30 at the Alden Terrace School. Our daily attendance, 82.7%, and we were able to service kids in K through 5th grade. This year, we did have two pre-K students in our program. A special thank you to our transportation department for transporting our students, our shuttle buses every day, and also to our cafeteria staff for the delicious breakfast and lunch that they provided to the students and to the staff. A special thank you also to our teachers. What was nice is we had some teachers who taught the students during the year and kept those students during the summer, so there was a great continuation of what they learned, along with many teacher raids that were important. And we also would like to thank our parents for being supportive and bringing their children every day. Our maintenance of the students' instructions is a little different than the program for enrichment, because it goes on the goals of the children on their IEP, and with that, they were able to get ELA math, whole-group instruction, and also gym and music in rotation. And something that's important about this program is helping the students with their daily living skills. So we did a lot of activities with that. With that, we had additional support, where the children may have received PT, OT, speech. We had a behavior specialist, social worker psychologist, and we also had our administrative team.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Trioni. I'm an Assistant Principal over at Covert Avenue, and I had the privilege of working for the ESY program over the summer. So along with what Mrs. Wallfall said, in addition to the mandated services for our students, we also tried to make the program fun, engaging, and interactive for our students. So with that, we had various themed weeks that our teachers and support staff aligned their instruction to support our education in this program. In addition, we went on a lot of field trips. There were multiple field trips per week, every week. We went into our local businesses. We went to various community centers. The students went to the library, our pizzerias. They went across the street to Key Food, did food shopping. It was a great experience for all our students. And then in addition to that, we brought some of the fun in-house with us. So in order to support our local businesses as well as our community, we brought them to us, where our local Home Depot donated crafts for every single child in the program. And we also had a therapy doll come in. We had the Elmont Fire Department come to talk about fire safety. The children were able to explore the trucks. And to help build our home-school connection, we invited parents and siblings in to read to their children. In addition to all the other culminating activities that go along with our themed weeks, we had parties and parades. So the program was bumping the whole time, and the kids were excited. It was engaging, it was fun, and it was interactive.
As part of a culminate activity, we decided that we wanted to have a talent showcase with the students, and instead of having them on the school stage, we said we are taking them to the Elmont Public Library on the big stage. So we practiced that by every week going on the stage at the Alden Terrace School. But this year, for our first talent showcase, we had about 90 students on stage. Some families felt, I'm not sure if my child will get up there and get comfortable, but they all did an amazing job. We had live performances, dance, piano, recorder, drumming, singing, building. We also had video submissions, because we felt that some students might not be comfortable onstage, so their families submitted a video. We had students' horseback riding videos, art, music, and singing. And what was nice is we had two students that are, one currently at Elmont High School and one at Sewanica High School, that were part of the program but came back and sang, and they helped to emcee. So we look forward to having more talent showcases for the students in the program in the school year and also next summer. Thank you.
So you can see the quote up on the screen, "That the ESY program was truly outstanding, providing my son with consistent support, structure, and meaningful learning opportunities. The dedicated staff created a nurturing environment that helped him thrive both academically and socially over the summer." And that was from Anthony D.'s mom. And we have to say that the parents, the community, the children, the Board of Education, thank you for supporting these amazing programs, Mr. Small for giving us those extra initiatives this summer, and we just want to say thank you. We really enjoy it, and we hope that you enjoy this little clip and get an insight as to what they did over the summer.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Mr. Cavallieri, and I currently serve as the interim director for curriculum and instruction. And I just wanted, before we move forward with some of the work that was done this summer to improve our curriculum and our instruction throughout the district, I did want to just give one more big round of applause to our administrators and our staff that run those summer programs. We all know at the end of June, it is tiring. And these administrators and these staff members gave up their summers to lead these programs. And just speaking with other districts, not many districts on Long Island offer the opportunities that we're able to offer here in Elmont. And that's a big testament to the Board of Education, our superintendent, and the community itself to be able to have these opportunities for our scholars. So we thank you, and we thank everyone in this room for giving us that opportunity. We look forward to continuing that moving forward. In addition to the great things that our scholars had the opportunity to participate in this summer, we also had a team of teachers who represented each of our six buildings throughout the district, guided by our proud principal of the Dutch Broadway School, Ms. Cynthia Cassim, to update our curriculum resources and make sure that we are continually improving the resources that we have available to our scholars throughout the year. So I'm going to highlight some of those areas and then talk about some of our program enhancements as well. And then we'll dive a little bit deeper into some of these things with Ms. Cassim's presentation of what was done over the summer. So in curriculum enhancements, some of the major things that we worked on this summer was a new science curriculum that focused on hands-on instruction. We're really excited that that has been rolled out to start this school year. It also enables our classrooms to have class pets. So each of our grade levels will have a class pet, which our students will really enjoy. We're really excited about that. But we're more excited about the hands-on opportunities our scholars will have with this new OHM Science Program. In addition to that, we also updated our social studies curriculum resources by adopting the new Nassau-Boise Regional Social Studies Curriculum. So we're excited about a new science and social studies program rolling out this year for our scholars. We have developed quarterly literacy assessments for both reading and writing. So each trimester, we will have a quarterly reading and a quarterly writing assignment that will be recorded on our data grids and used as data to help guide and improve our instruction for our scholars throughout the year. In addition to that, we have updated our Academic Intervention Services progress reports for our students that receive AIS services. We have digitized our Go Math assessments to continue to prepare our students for computer-based testing and providing our teachers with individualized data to help guide their small group instruction and morning tutorial sessions to individualize instruction for each of our scholars. We have expanded our Hegarty phonemic awareness program to grade three this year. We have updated our ABA curriculum resources. And I have to give a big shout out to Dr. Legande, our interim director, Dr. Orley Gaddan, and Ms. Stacia Woolfall, the principal of Clara Carlson, who over the summer put a team of ABA teachers from each of our three buildings who have those programs together to develop an ABA resources that our scholars and our teachers could benefit from using this year. So we're very excited about that, those resources that are now available for those ABA programs throughout our district. We also added five new inclusive read titles to our inclusive read program this year. So we're continuing to build and expand on that program. So we're excited for those five new texts to roll out this year to our scholars in each of our six buildings. In addition to that, our programs and enrichment, we are continuously improving that as well across the district. And this year, we are very proud to be able to announce that we have expanded our physical education services to twice a week for all students in pre-K through six. Prior to this year, that was only offered to our 5th and 6th graders this year. And moving forward, all students pre-K through six will have Phys Ed twice a week. So we're very excited about that. In addition to that, we were also able to provide a STEAM prep. This is new for our 5th and 6th graders across the district who already had Phys Ed twice a week. So for them, they are now getting a STEAM prep. And we are very excited to have this opportunity for hands-on coding experiences for our 5th and 6th graders to continue to prepare them for 21st century learning and jobs of the future. So we're very excited about that as well. We have hired three new STEAM teachers this year to run those programs throughout our six buildings. In addition, we are really excited about a new Plaza Theatrical Theater program that we are introducing to the district this year. I am proud to announce that our play this year will be Frozen Junior. And all six of our schools will have the opportunity to participate this. And it will be done in pairs. So our first performance this year will be combining the Clara H. Carlson and the Dutch Broadway Schools together to do a production of Frozen Junior. We will then move into the, further into the school year where our Stewart Manor and our Covert Avenue Schools will pair together to put on a production as well. And then finally, our Alden Terrace and our Gotham Avenue Schools will pair up to put on a production as well. This is an after-school program that is run by Plaza Theatrical, costumes, sound, sets, the works. We're really excited to roll this program out this year for our 5th and 6th grade students. And auditions for the Clara H. Carlson and the Dutch Broadway Schools start next Monday. So we're very excited to roll this out. And lastly, many of us here had the opportunity to see the dancing classrooms in action at our 10-year reception in June. We are proud to say that we are expanding that program to two additional schools this year. So the Gotham Avenue and the Dutch Broadway Schools will also be adopting that program as we continue to expand it across the district. I would now like to introduce Ms. Cynthia Cassim, who'll dive a little bit deeper in some of the work that was done this summer.
Good evening. As Mr. Cavallieri mentioned, we were able to expand Hegarty. It's a phonics program in addition, that we're implementing in addition to foundations. We started this program two years ago with our pre-K through 2nd grade students. And now we're expanding it to 3rd grade. Teachers have the resources on the instructional drive to implement 15-minute daily lessons. We also expanded our inclusive community read library with five additional texts. We are now up to 46 books. The texts were actually selected from a list of recommendations from our teachers across the district. And with the addition of these five texts, we introduced two new themes, socio-economic differences and multicultural acceptance. Reading and writing mini lessons, the instructional coaches revised those pacing guides so that they aligned with the themes. Students are able to analyze authors' crafts and mimic their style of writing in their own writing. So we were able to align that. We were also able to develop an early literacy map for our pre-kindergarten students. We never had that before. And it outlines the units for the school year for our pre-kindergarten program, which at the Dutch Broadway School has expanded to three classes in the building. So we're excited about that. We also, as Mr. Cavallieri mentioned, developed ELA benchmarks so that the reading assessments mimic the style of questioning that they're going to be asked for the New York State tests. They are going to be given three times during the course of the year. Teachers will be able to use that data to inform their instruction and develop small group instruction and also differentiate for their students accordingly. They're able to also monitor the students' progress throughout the year in a more streamlined fashion. In math, as we always do every year, we take the state-released questions and we create packets. The teachers use these packets to assign do-nows, homework, small group instruction. And it's just a natural way to embed test prep in just everyday instruction. Go Math tests were now migrated using Datamate. Datamate is a platform that's very similar to the platform students are going to be using to take the New York State assessments. So by doing this, they'll get familiar with the tools. They'll get familiar with the style, how to answer questions online, so that in the spring, when they take the test, they are prepared. We also developed, which is new, the math and scope and sequence for our pre-kindergarten program so that it outlines the math units for the teachers throughout the school year. As Mr. Cavallieri mentioned, we have a new science program. I was actually part of the science committee where we kind of explored different science programs. And this program incorporated writing, incorporated reading. It incorporated hands-on experiences to really prepare the students, not only for exploration of science concepts, but to also prepare them for the New York State test that they have to take in grade five. They have live animals. 5th grade is getting ready to get geckos delivered to the building in the next week or so. And I actually, because I know questions probably going to say, what are the live animals for the other grades? So here we go. Kindergarten has betta fish. 1st grade has hermit crabs. 2nd grade has mealworms and pill bugs. 3rd grade has painted lady butterfly eggs. 4th grade has crayfish. And the 5th grade, as I mentioned, have geckos. With this new program, the committee were able to develop pacing guides so that it gives a clear map of how the teachers are going to implement the units to make sure that all of those units are addressed within the year. And we also developed teacher prep forms. It's an easy snapshot reference sheet where the teachers can look. They can see what's available to them in the kit, what they have to supply for the, for the, for the units, and then also what needs to be ordered so that they're prepared to implement these units. We also adopted a social studies program for our kindergarten through 5th grade, regional social studies, teaching students how to analyze documents. They have online resources where they can explore those topics, exploring primary and secondary documents. And it encourages writing, which is something that we want to implement across the curriculum areas. It is my, and then the last thing is, as he mentioned, we streamlined the academic intervention progress reports so that they reflect the New York Next Generation standards. And it also reflects the objectives that they're addressing in the current programs that Elmont is implementing. So it brings, gives me great pleasure to work with a team of teachers who are so passionate about education, know our children, and know what they need. And I just want to say thank you to all of the teachers that I had the privilege of working with. And now I'm turning it over to, is it, Fernando. There you go.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome. My name is Fernando Di Bartolo. I'm the director of technology for the district. And it's funny that I'm following Ms. Cassim. Ms. Cassim always says she's a proud principal of the Dutch Broadway School. Little fun fact, I'm a proud graduate of the Dutch Broadway School. So I'm very happy, I'm Dutch Broadway lying through and through. So I'm very happy to always come home. Dr. Legande and I are going to share this slide with initiatives. What we want to do is update, we already updated the staff, but also the community on two important technology updates, as well as a safety update, and then human resources. So I'm going to start off with Parent Square and kind of do the two. So what is Parent Square? We already informed our staff members before they left in June that they were coming back to use this new communication platform. And we have sent invitations and invites to parents, and we wanted to give you a little more information. So basically, Parent Square is a unified communication platform. What do I mean by that? There's three things that Parent Square is helping us out with. Number one, direct communication between parents and teachers. Number two, communication between the building administration, central office administration, and its parents and its staff. And third, the website. Okay, so that's another important way that the district communicates with its, with its staff and its community. Well, Parent Square, if you think about it, is replacing three different platforms that we had last year. So in 2425, we were using Remind for parent-teacher messages. We're using ConnectEd for parent and staff communications between the district office and, and the building. And we have a website platform called Syntax. So with this here with Parent Square, the district has merged three communication platforms into one. We also wanted to let the, know the community that another goal that we reached with Parent Square is we became much more cost-effective. And by that, I mean is, if last year we were paying for three different databases, that's three different yearly subscriptions, three different maintenance and service contracts. So with Parent Square, we were able to eliminate those and only pay for one. Okay? So if you don't mind, I have to kind of do double duty. I'm going to grab this, and I wanted to show everyone that we created a very important resource page. I want to thank Mrs. Woolfall. Where is she? Ms. Woolfall? Where is she? Ms. Woolfall sends me, she's like, Fernando, please. She sends me a sample of another district that had Parent, Parent Square Family Resources page. And she's like, Fernando, we need something like this. So she sent it, we modeled it, and I want to, I'm very happy to show this to the community so you know where to find it, as well as our teachers who are here as well, because I think you'll find it helpful. I got it. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to sit down, but I'll, I'll just go through this. Oh, no, I didn't want to show that. Okay. Ooh, loud. Okay, if you look at our, this is our current website. Okay, elmontschools.org. Wait, where is it? Hold on a second. Put it on the, on the website? No, on the new one? No. All right, sorry about that. Here we go. Okay, so this is our current website, elmontschools.org. We want to let you know that if you look at resources, if you click on resources on the top, there's going to be a dropdown for Parent Square Family Resources. There, we created a page. It talks about what Parent Square is, some features of Parent Square, how a parent can register. And very important, we added this. This is, click here by step-by-step guide on how a parent can get the invite and register. Very quick, easy steps. There's a video tutorial, which is in English and Spanish. Frequently asked questions. How do I register for Parent Square? There's also information on how to download the app. How do I manage notifications? And language settings. It's very important to note here that parents, when they download the app, and I'm, just let me go through this because there's 10 tips for guardians and parents also. But this is important. Will parents receive notifications from Parent Square if they do not sign up for Parent Square? So I want to let everyone know that if parents do not download the app and do not register an account, they still will get updates from Parent Square. As long as their phone number and their email is correct in Parent Square and in East School, they will still get messages. Obviously, the benefit, and we're encouraging parents to download Parent Square because what they're going to get with the app, think about your Facebook or your Instagram feed. You're going to get a beautiful feed of what's going on in your child's school. You're going to be directly connected to your child's teacher. So we encourage you to do so. But if a parent does not download or register an account, they will still get information. It also talks about if a student is no longer in, in the school, what can they do to unsubscribe? But again, I just wanted to show everybody that this is here. Again, under Resources and Parent Square Family Resources. Okay, so I hope that's helpful. Next, like I talked about, we have the website. And I am happy to show that our new website for Parent Square looks like this. So we're going from, this is part of our, our home screen now. And in about two weeks, we're going to go to this brand-new website. As you can see here, this is a Parent Square website. This is not live. I just wanted to let everyone know that the district is going to take the two days during the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah when schools are closed and parents and teachers will not have to access the website. We're going to go ahead and We're going to go ahead and flip the switch from our Syntax site to our Parent Square site. So everyone's going to see on the homepage, they'll see, this is a 30-second clip of five seconds of each school. So I just wanted to highlight really quick two things. If you notice here, we talk about translation. One of the things that we wanted to go with Parent Square is that here, this is a Google button, and it translates over 180 languages. Okay? So that button is on there everywhere. So I just want to show how easy it is to use. You can just click Spanish. Hold on. And there, it translates right into Spanish. Okay? The other dominant language in the Elmont School District are Haitian Creole and Urdu, so I just want to highlight those. No, it's not Haitian Creole, but hold on. There's Haitian Creole. And then there's, final one is Urdu. Just to let you know, this button is on every single page. This button is on every single page, and again, we want to do this to give our parents the ability to say, you know, that they can understand and follow everything in their own language. So that is the Google Translate piece. Okay, one other thing I wanted to show, Dutch Broadway, since we're at Dutch Broadway, just wanted to highlight a quick school. So you see Dutch Broadway, and this is every single, every single school. So the way this is going to work is the drone footage, instead of a five-second drone footage, it's going to be 15 seconds of the school, which I think we think looks great. The About Us is usually the message or an About Us about Dutch Broadway. Here, I wanted to show you that we have upcoming events. What's going to happen on the Parent Square website is that you're going to have the first six events showing up, or the next six coming up for the school. If the parent does want to see a full calendar, there's a full calendar here, and it will show the school's events that your child's go to, as well as district-wide events, latest news, and this is from district-wide. Okay, so this is important. So these links that parents see here, I just wanted to show you where they are on the old site. So if you go to... So if you go on our current site, the links that you see here are all going to be on the bottom on the new Parent Square site. Those are all here. And finally, what makes us great, that is, each school building will have their vision statement and their mission, along with how many students they have enrolled and faculty members. So I hope with this too, you get a good idea, again, of why we joined Parent Square. It really is meeting all of our communication needs. Again, this website will be visible as of September 24th. Okay? I have one more. Okay, so installation of new interior doors, just quickly, as far as the safety measure. So we're very happy to say that we're going to be, well, first, let me just say this. Let me take everyone back a few years ago of what our security looked like at Dutch Broadway. If you were to be here three years ago, and you walked through that back door, you would see a teacher aide or someone that we trained on a table ringing and buzzing somebody in as they come in, and that visitor would sign a visitor's book, and we would physically or manually put a visitor's badge on their shirt. Three years on, now we have state-of-the-art best-of-hoels, we have professional guards with Allied. Each building is outfitted with over 30 interior and exterior cameras, so we've really come a long way. And we wanted to tell the parents and the community that, and the staff members, that along with improving and doing better, our big safety initiative for this year are going to be the interior security doors. So starting in the fall, we're going to be replacing 350 interior doors throughout the district, and those doors will also have lockdown capability. So there's two things that we're going to do with this. Number one, the teachers will have private access with their existing card into their classrooms that only they can get into. And number two, the lockdown capability. So these doors, these new doors, will be outfitted that as soon as a principal or staff member hits that lockdown button, instead of a teacher having to worry about look for his or her keys and lock their own door, as long as the door is locked, once that lockdown button is pressed, the door automatically locks. So in essence, we're basically saving the teaching staff time, the 15, 20, 30 seconds it may take them to lock their door, so they can focus more on, you know, getting their students hovering in the corners, shutting off the light, and staying quiet. So that's one of the safety initiatives. Now, the timeline that we put, and this is something that we told the staff, and I'll just finish with this, is we're starting in the fall, we're starting in November. So what's going to happen is, in each school, for example, here at Dutch Broadway, you're going to have two sets of vendors. You're going to have the vendors who are going to be, they'll say, okay, we're working on a hallway today. They'll replace all the doors, the door vendor, and the door vendor will be followed by the security company, who evening that we are working very hard to refine all of our systems and processes, and that's no different with human resources. So there are three programs that we are launching in the district on October 1st. The Frontline Absence Management Platform. Right now, we are using a paper-based program, so we're moving away from paper-based and using online platform. So teachers will be able to record their absences online or call into a number, and that will enable us to not only manage it, approve it, but it'll be much easier for them. The other program that we're moving again from paper-based to online and also automating our system is through our evaluation process. So every teacher in our district is evaluated and is observed. Untended teachers observed three times to announce, one unannounced, and our tenured teachers observed twice. And so to be able to help our administrators work more efficiently and effectively, the Danielson rubric, which is what's used for our teacher evaluations, will be uploaded onto the evaluation platform. In addition to the administrator rubrics will also be on the platform. What makes this easier is when we have to report to the state. We do not have to manually calculate using Excel spreadsheets. Those systems are automatically updated into the system that manages that. The last bullet is the Employee Assistance Program. We are incredibly excited, because we invest in our children, and the best investment that we make is our teachers. Happy teachers, happy students. And so with the Employee Assistance Program, every single staff member in our district has an opportunity to get the support that they need, because everyone's well-being is important. The well-being of our custodians, the well-being of our cafeteria workers. So happy staff, happy students. To be able to give our staff the resources, we will have an online program, so we will have an online platform that they will be able to register and confidentially contact either a therapist, life coach, or even learn different aspects of their job. So this system enables them to access 14,000 online courses that could also be self-managed. So we're super excited to introduce the EAP program. Thank you.
Well, I'll have to report from our attorney.
Thank you, President Capers. The first resolution for the board's consideration is, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Audit Committee, the Elmont Union Free School District's Board of Education accepts and adopts the Independent Auditor's Report, prepared by R.S. Abrams regarding internal controls related to information technology for the period ending May 31st, 2025, the report on facilities maintenance, the corrective action plan regarding information technology, the corrective action plan for facilities maintenance, and the risk assessment update report. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries, 7-0. The next resolution for the board's consideration is, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves an employment agreement with Pamela Stamedis as Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Palmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ramos. All in favor? Thank you. Approved, 7-0. The next resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves an employment agreement with Rita Johnson as Interim Director of English as a New Language, ENL. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Battle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Capers. All in favor? Approved, 7-0. And the final resolution for the board's consideration, be it resolved that the Elmont Board of Education hereby appoints Steve Cossarda as the Hearing Officer in the matter of disciplinary proceedings against employee B. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with Civil Service Law Section 75. Hearing Officer Cossarda is hereby directed to cause a transcript to be made of the hearing, which will be referred to the board, along with his findings of fact and recommendations as to penalty, if any, for review and final decision by the board. Be it further resolved that the Elmont Board of Education hereby authorizes the suspension without pay of employee B for up to 30 calendar days. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Capers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez.
Members of the board, I seek a motion to approve personnel agenda items 5.1, 5 through 5.2, with the exception of 5.1, B8.
May I have a motion to approve personnel item, agenda items 5.1 through 5.2, with the exception of 5.1, item 8?
Moved.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. Second? Thank you, Ms. Douglas. All in favor? Motion carries.
I seek a motion to approve curriculum agenda items 6.1.
May I have a motion to approve curriculum agenda item 6.1? May I have a motion? Thank you, Ms., thank you, Dr. Willa Massey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Battle. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I seek a motion to approve Support Services Agenda Item 7.2.
What about 7.1?
7.1, 7.1.
May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.1, the Committee on Special Education, the Committee on Preschool Education, and the Section 504 Committee?
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Second? Thank you, Dr. Willa Massey. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I seek a motion to approve Business Agenda Items 8.1 through 8.5.
May I have a motion to approve Business Agenda Items 8.1 through 8.5?
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would like, before I conclude my report, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Stamedis on her new appointment. Mrs. Trioni on her new appointment. Mrs. Johnson on her new appointment. And Mr. Cavallari on his new appointment. Madam President, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wall. Do we have any committee reports or informational items? All right, board committee assignments. The board met and discussed these assignments earlier, and we would like to offer the following appointments for our committees. Health and Safety, Mr. Palmer and Ms. Battle. Facilities, Mr. Khan and Ms. Douglas. And Policy Committee, Dr. Willa Massey and Mr. Ramos. All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Second, I heard Ms. Battle. I'm sorry, I did that wrong. Yeah, but you guys knew just what to do. Thank you, thank you. The motion was Mr. Palmer, the second was Battle. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have any old business? Any new business? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? And I ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and I remind you that whether it be praise or problem, please refrain from using any of our employee names, and that you take your first course of action, or either of the two would be to your building administration, and then our superintendent. Please state your name and your concern.
Good evening. I'm Rochelle Lewis. I have two concerns. In May, I came up to the board. I presented some questions that were forwarded to the district clerk, who forwarded to the attorney. The three questions regarding the shared responsibility of the review of the bylaws, term limits for the board members, and how can we be briefed on which sections were being revised. I heard tonight that there was a committee, just that there was appointment of two members of the board. I just recently heard it. I think you just guys voted on it. And I would like to know if that committee, one of the committees that's going to be under consideration and open to the public for participation on the committee.
We'll take your question, and someone will get back to you.
Okay, thank you. So in May, when I forwarded this, I thought I was going to get a response from the attorney. So shall I not expect the response? May 22nd, it was forwarded.
Perhaps there was a hiccup, but I did respond. I don't know if it didn't make its way to you, but I did send the district a response, so we'll make sure that gets over to you.
So then maybe this evening we'll just follow up and make sure you have the right emails, because I didn't get the response.
I don't email residents directly, but I provide my response to the district, and someone in central administration will send my response to the individual resident, so we'll make sure you get that.
So the response, if I go look for it, would have came from the district clerk? Not you?
I can't say who in central administration would have sent it to you, but I will look into it directly after this meeting and make sure that it makes its way over to you.
Okay. And then so...
And before we move off that, Ms. Lewis, we'll just make sure, I said, before we move on to your next concern, we'll follow up with you with a phone call tomorrow, just to make sure you have that.
No, phone calls don't work. You can send me an email.
No, just to make sure that you got the email. I know you want your response in writing.
I won't be able to, no, I just won't be able to answer your phone during today.
Okay, no worries.
So I'd rather it not. Okay. And then so the last thing I would like to ask is that there was a lot of confusion and some fluster regarding a lot of different things in the community. But can you clarify to me exactly who votes in the district office? When we're seeing those numbers that come in, there is a certain count for the district office? I don't know who could answer that, or if I need to forward that as a request, if no one knows it tonight. But who actually votes in the district office? When there is election, there's a count that's in the tally, there's a count that's acknowledged for voters from the district office? And I would like to just know who votes in the district office? Yes, the vote, says Elmont vote, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good, we will.
And she has my email, so she can forward it back.
Good evening. Ooh, Lord. Good evening, everyone. Riva Whitehead, EIC president, as well as Claire H. Carlson, treasurer. So you, sorry, I don't like microphones, I don't do well with microphones. Anyway, so I was approached by several parents, as well as units in the district, regarding some administration changes. I'm just trying to gain clarity on what's going on, because I don't know how to, what to tell them, or how to report back to them. I have no idea what's going on, I don't have a clear understanding, so I'm hoping you guys can clear it up for me, as well as the wonderful people here.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. I met, I saw you last week, and I told you I'd like to schedule a meeting with you to go over some of the transitions going on in the school district in terms of leadership and initiatives. So that was part of my reasoning for reaching out to you. There are some changes...
There are some changes with leadership in the district, as you can see from the agenda items, that were just approved by the board. Some of them, for example, Mr. Cavallieri sitting here, he was, he was the interim director of curriculum instruction last year, and he has indicated that he does not want to continue in that role. He was there for a year. And so, therefore, that precipitated a change in the curriculum office. I could speak specifically, for example, regarding Alden Terrace. The principal indicated to us that she would not be able to return to start the school year, and so, therefore, we had to find someone to cover the building, so the building could open smoothly, as it did this school year, and therefore, we had, we had a, a reassignment of Mrs. Rodrigo over to Alden Terrace. So, there are some things that we didn't have control over, that as superintendent, I had to advise the board about the moves that we had to make, so that the school system would continue to function, so that schools could reopen safely and smoothly, and so that we would have instructional leadership, building leadership in those buildings.
Okay. And you may have, or you may not have, I'm not sure, but was the community notified about these changes, and that this was going to happen, that she wasn't going to be returning?
Yes, the community was, was notified.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Hi, Ms. Beeman. How are you?
Good evening, good evening, Michaela Beeman, Clarice Carlson parent. First, I want to start off by thanking you for this amazing presentation. I'm very excited about the curriculum, excited about the new people coming on board, and excited that our superintendent is responsive, and meets with people, and actually answers emails. I truly appreciate you for that. So, first, I wanted to ask about the hiring committee. I know, we briefly talked about it. One of the concerns that I do have is that, speaking about, like, you know, the community and community notification, just to give you a little bit of context, before you came to us, Mr. Small, and gave us all this great work, we had superintendents coming in, and a lot of people didn't know what was the criteria that was being used for the superintendent. What are we exactly asking in these interviews? How are we establishing who gets interviewed? So, giving that same inquiry into, like, the teachers that we're bringing in, I would like to know a little bit more about how are we identifying our talent? How are we bringing these people in? And also, you know, we talked about accreditation, and how are we really targeting individuals who have the most certification?
Yes.
Because, like, as I've been championing for more special education certifications, more gifted and talented, you know, our neighbor, right along the border, New York City, they have an entire gifted and talented program from kindergarten into fourth grade. So, if they're pulling enough people for an entire program for four grades, I think five grades, I think we can do something similar, maybe if we're collaborating, if we're talking with them, like, how are you targeting people? How are you getting your pool together?
Very good. In terms of instructional leaders, leadership in the buildings, when we hire principals and assistant principals, which we have done this year for each building, we typically invite members of the PTA. The PTA will submit the parents who will come, who will be part of the committee. We also invite teachers to be a part of it, so we'll reach out to the teachers' union, who will recommend to us the teachers who will be on the committee. And from, for all the other bargaining units, we invite them to submit individuals to participate in the committee. So, the committee for principals is a very broad-based committee, made up of stakeholders from the committee, from, from the, the school community. Teachers, parents, clerical staff, custodial staff, staff members from the, the food services department, and/or aides. Oftentimes, because this was being done over the summer, some people might not be able to, to come to, to the, to the committee interviews, but we try to get a broad-based community involvement from that school community for, for the leadership in the building, for principals and assistant principals. When we do teachers, we also do, teachers sit on the committee with the building administration, and someone from central administration. So, the curriculum director will oftentimes be a part of it. If it's special ed, someone from the special education department will be there, and other teachers in the building. And then, the committee works its way through those candidates, and recommend individuals to central office, where Dr. Legandia and I, and Mr. Cavallieri will also do those interviews before we recommend someone to the Board of Education. We try to get people who have broad-based certifications. Obviously, we, we look for teachers who have ENL certification, because we have a, a large amount of second language learners. We look for teachers who also have a special education certification. So, when we do advertise, we are trying to get people with multiple certifications, because we do know that with those certifications, they are trained to meet the diverse needs of our students. You and I have spoken about gifted and talented. As you can see, that we are doing a significant amount of initiatives. And we have spoken about, not that we are opposed to it, but the issue is we will not be able to do K through six for a gifted and talented. And it's not something that we have right now, because we have to budget for it. So, if you can see, for example, one of the things that the board did on my recommendation this year, is we've hired more physical education teachers, so that we can offer more physical education classes to our students. So, all students, K through, pre-K through six, will be getting two periods of physical education, as opposed to one, where students were getting it. We wrestled with, this year, offering a second language in grades five and six. Unfortunately, we were not able to get teachers with that certification, so we then moved, in consultations with our principals, about offering STEM. And so, we offered, we hired three teachers to enable us to offer STEM classes to our fifth and sixth graders. Because one of the things we want to do is get them better prepared as they're getting ready to go up to the high school. In, in, in doing so, we've, we have engaged the services of a consultant to work with the teachers, to provide them with the curriculum, to provide them with training, so that there can be consistency in the quality of the education that the students will be getting in all six buildings. And so, we are working on those things. We are not ruling out gifted and talented. It is the fact that we have to be strategic in how we approach it, and ensure that we have the appropriate budgetary allowances for that.
Thank you. And I do note that you gave me that wonderful answer in email as well, so I do appreciate you now, educating the rest of the group for that. I have a follow-up, though. Now that I've seen, you didn't tell me you had this amazing presentation coming up. So, from this presentation, I see that we have so much that we're adding, we're adding enrichment, we're adding all these things. So, I have a question about, what are the goals that we are actually trying to accomplish by bringing in all this new change?
Yes.
And how are we going to measure that objectively? Is it going to be New York State, you know, standardized testing, or is there something else that we're going to use to assess how all these changes are really improving our children's education?
So, the goal, as always, is to provide our students with the most enriched education opportunities that we can offer them. Obviously, that, we are not only focusing on academics, we're also focusing on the arts. So, that's why we're expanding the dancing classrooms program. In previous years, it was in one building, this year, we've expanded it to two additional buildings. We know that our students must be well-rounded. It's not just academics. We have to do the arts. Not every child comes to school, want to engage in academic activity, they have other interests and strengths that we want to focus on. So, with dancing classrooms, that's one enrichment that we're providing. The theater program, another program that we are offering our students, that we believe will get them adequately prepared, and having enrichment tailored to their strengths for, for when they move on to the high school. We are also doing, we're, we're enriching our, our curriculum, so hands-on experiences for science. Where they're not learning science, but they're doing science, and are able to make observations and generalizations across the curriculum as they're doing so. But ultimately, what we want for our students is for them to achieve at a high level. And that would be measured on the New York State assessments for grades three through six, the math and English language arts assessments, and the grade five, science assessments. So, ultimately, we want our students to achieve at a high level, and the easiest way to measure that is through the New York State assessment programs.
But if the New York State assessment is just for grades five and grade six, how do we...
It's grades three, four, five, and six.
Yes, my apologies. So, it's from three to six, how are we going to measure the improvements from pre-K to two?
Because what the assessments do, they're, while they are tested in three through six, it is testing skills and content that has also been taught in the building block grades, in grades K one and two. So, while those classes are not being tested by New York State, the kids have to be adequately prepared by the time they get to grade three. So, how our children do in grades three through six is, is a reflection of the foundational grades, pre-K through grade two. So, so while they're not being assessed in those grades, we are collecting data on them as they're going up, so we could know which students need the additional support, so that they could be adequately prepared as they go forward.
So, and out of curiosity, what data are we collecting? So, it's not going to be New York State standardized?
No, it's not going to be, we have our benchmarking in WEA, we have the Fontana-Pennell benchmarking, we have chapter tests from, from math, and we have writing prompts that we do to our students, things that we expect them to be able to do. So, while they're not being tested by the state, we're collecting data as they go forward. And we're using that data to guide instruction, to guide what support we provide them as they go through the grades.
Can we anticipate a presentation at the end of the school year?
Yes.
Of like, of how they perform before we did all these great changes to the curriculum, and how we're seeing any changes?
Yes. So, what we normally do last year in December, I give the board, we gave the board, Mr. Cavallieri gave the board a presentation in New York State assessments. One of the things we can do at the end of the year is also give the board an overview of our local assessments about how our children do. So, that's something that we can do. But in December, we'll give the community and the board a report, a presentation about how our students have done on the New York State assessments. I am proud to report that we have seen incremental improvements, and, and so, we'll have that presentation in December.
You mentioned that we're doing quarterly literacy assessments, right? With respect to how they're reading. Are we going to be coordinating with our library, so that as the students, whatever, let's say if they're reading on an M level, that there's something in a database where the students can go to the library? Like, I try to take my kids to the library, but if the librarian doesn't know what their reading level is, and how it's going along with their quarterly literacy assessments, I think it'll make it more streamlined.
Well, obviously, one of the things that we do, we want to have strong partnership with the, with the local library, right? We have programs where I know the younger grades are taken to the library for field trips, to get their, to get their library cards, right? One of the things that I used to do when I was a principal is the librarian used to come and meet with all the kids in June prior to summer, to encourage summer reading, and to help them to, to make sure that they all have a summer, so, have their library cards. But one of the things, for me, as, as a parent, and both also for our students, when our kids go to the library, we want them to be able to choose the book of their choice, right? We don't want it to be something that is being imposed on them. So, whether or not they like to read about sports, or whatever their choice is, because the summer reading program is to encourage kids to read for the enjoyment of reading, not for what is being assigned to them to do. So, while we will continue to build those partnerships, and to be, having a close collaboration with the librarians, we want to make sure the kids have the library cards, want to make sure that they visit the library on a regular basis. But we also want to make sure it's being done in a fun way, where they're choosing what they want to read, as opposed to when they're in school, and the teachers are assigning them the reading assignment. And so, for the love of reading, we want to give them that choice and voice when they go to the library during the summertime.
I have one, two recommendations and one question.
Yes.
So, my one recommendation is with social studies.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned having primary and secondary documents. I think in addition to exploring primary and secondary documents, it's important for our children to understand sources and bias from a source. I think as our children are taking in information, they should be able to understand that, what is a reliable source of information?
Yes.
Like, maybe the Washington Post, or New York Times, as a newspaper article, with journalists who have some kind of integrity?
Yes.
As opposed to getting your news off of TikTok? Talking to, like, the, the younger generation, a lot of them are getting their news off of TikTok from a user who's telling them something. And so, I think they should really have that understanding.
I think that's embedded in the instruction when the teachers have reading with the students, you know, facts, opinions, how do you judge reliable source? It's done as an embedded part of the reading instruction in the classroom.
Beautiful to hear. The other recommendation that I have is, we talked about happy teachers. I think we should also, with the EAP component, make sure that we have initiatives that are focusing on retention?
Yes.
And ensuring healthy workplace climate?
Yes.
So that our teachers are having, like, the overall positive experience. But the question that I have is for a security lockdown. We talked about having security here from Allied. Do we have, NCPD advertised having liaison patrol every single school? Do we have that in place in our schools? And also, are we coordinating with NCPD that maybe have off-duty police officers serve as security guards as well, or are we only doing Allied?
We do Allied now, because we have a contract with them. A lot of school districts make the, the determination, do they want to have retired police officers as their security staff? Do they want to have people who have guns as, as part of their security staff? So, that's a district that, that's a decision that as a district, if push comes to shove, that we'll have to make. Do we want to have that in our buildings, or do we, are we satisfied with the current arrangement that we have with Allied security? So far, we are satisfied with them, and so, I don't think the board and I are at the stage where we have to reconsider that security arrangement. But it's not something that we are ruling out. If the, if the security atmosphere across the district changes, then that's a discussion the board and I will have to have about whether or not we have police officers, and whether or not we want someone on school campus with, with weapons with our students.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time and for your efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Beeman. Hi, Ms. Crick. How are you?
Good. Okay, so, I'm going on my tenth year here at Dutch Broadway. Actually, yeah. One of my concerns is, I feel like we're still chasing clean water in the buildings. Clean water.
Clean water.
Clean water to drink. In June, as you guys know, and everyone knows, we had, like, unprecedented heat waves experiences. In this gym, we were dying during different events and things. But I had a unique event where my daughter's class, they went on a trip, which was cool, but they left a hot school, got on a hot bus, and they were forbidden from bringing their water bottles with them. I don't allow my daughter to drink the water in the school, because I know the history of the water, and the lead, and every, just in general. So, now with our current lead reports, I'm wondering, where are we with bringing the lead faucets in the kitchens, in Alden, and Gotham, and Stewart Manor? Why are we still chasing this kind of basic thing of having lead-free water, where we give food to the kid, for the kids to drink, and things of that nature?
Okay. What I can do, I could follow up with the building to see what is the practice in terms of students having water bottles on their desk? I am not particularly opposed to children having water bottles on a field trip, especially during the summer. So, I would have to ask some questions to get a proper answer for you.
What can the board, is there something that would preclude the board from making a rule that children can have water if they need it?
Students could have water if they needed. I, I think, I'm putting on my hat as a former principal and teacher, is the fact that sometimes the bottled water, the bottle on the desk can be a distraction with students, but we are not opposed to it. I would have to do more investigation to figure out what was happening in June, especially it's the end of the school year, it was very hot, whether or not students were denied the opportunity to bring water bottles with them.
Right. But this is not in the school, this was, they went out.
Yes, so, that's what I'm saying. Why, I don't understand why that would happen.
Right.
So, let me do some check-in.
Four or five hours without drinking.
Let me do some check-in to see what happened with that.
Okay. And then, what is, where are we with the lead situation with all of these different faucets?
With the lead situation that we have, we had about four or five faucets that were put out of service.
Right.
We changed, Mr. Walker, you can have me out here, we changed the, the faucets, and we are still working on a fix for those four, four faucets. Those faucets are off, they are not accessible to children, so they are not a threat to students or staff.
Okay, but we, from the report, we have about seventy throughout the district that are out of service. So, it seems like the trend is... So it seems like the trend is we find lead, no more, we shut it off. But why are we not fixing, replacing, you know, these things so that there are free water sources?
They were off before my tenure year. I don't know the reasoning behind why they were off. So that is something, and I wouldn't be able to tell you why they were turned off, right? I could tell you, for example, in this current, um, um, situation, we have, for example, a faucet that's in the basement of PPS. Nobody goes down there, nobody uses it, right? But it was tested. So I could see a decision being made that since it's not being used, why are we having it on anyway? You know, um, so I-
But 70? And these are potable, which means it's for drinking?
Those were done over many years and I couldn't speak to why they were turned off.
Can Ms. Capers, since I think you've been here the longest, do you know why we haven't, you know, addressed all of these?
Someone will look into it and get back to you.
Okay, so that means we don't know. Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask about was the air conditioning. Like, it's been technically years now since we voted, approved. We still, like, what, why do we not have the, people are like, oh, it's up there. And I'm like, where? You know, we died in the, not died, but, you know, um, during graduation time, some, I was one of the families that died in here, then had to go to the library and die waiting outside to get in. You know, it's, happy teacher, happy staff. Y'all need happy parents too, right? Because happy parents are gonna really be the crux of happy children. So I still, and I do have a sentiment that parents are kind of, our comfort is not necessarily always on the top of the list.
Yes, um, I'm happy to report that, um, we are in the process of installing the transformers that will power the new, um, HVAC system. One building so far has had a transformer installed and connected. Three buildings, transformers were, were, um, installed at, uh, Stewart Manor, Covert Avenue and Gotham Avenue. Stewart Manor is now up and fully functioning. And though the contractors are making a timeframe for, um, doing the others, I don't know the timeframe for this one. What I will tell you though is how we're hope and our goal is to have the transformers up and ready, um, by spring of 2026 so that we'll be having, we'll have it ready, the AC ready for the, the, the heat season starting in June.
Okay. And one more thing on the parent side of things, one of my ongoing issues, as some of you may know, has been a lack of inclusion of parents in the reading structure at our schools. You mentioned Fanta-Suppenel still, you know, I am at least, um, stimulated that we're making changes. But we also know that, again, Fanta-Suppenel has been found to have been controversial research-wise, so we're still using kind of what everyone else has kind of done away with, or many have done away with. So we're, we're behind with that. And then the other thing is that, you know, three kids here, I cannot remember ever being given a breakdown of what these assessments include, the running record per se. We get a, a random letter on, uh, in conference and that's all we ever know. And it's hard to assist your child when you don't really understand what their status is in their reading development. So I don't know if any of these programs you mentioned have the structure to accommodate parent coaching and parent assistance. It can't just be the teachers.
Absolutely. So here's what we, I know we would have to do better and we will endeavor to do that, is something akin to parent university, where we will have regular workshops where our reading teachers or building administrators will have the opportunity to go over with the principal, with their parents, what is the curriculum? What are the assessments we do? How do we use those assessments to drive, drive instruction? And how can parent support us at, at home and support their students? We will endeavor to do a better job at that, um, just give us some time to work on that.
Okay. But what I'm really asking for is customized feedback.
Yes, no, that would be part of it.
We get, from my understanding, I think we get like 15 minutes for parent-teacher conference?
Well, parent-teacher conference is, you know, we have those during the course of the year, but you can schedule a meeting at any point to go, even though you just get those 15 minutes, to schedule additional time to have those questions answered with your, your child's teacher.
Okay. But I hope that the goal is for everyone to get that feedback automatically.
If other parents need it, they can do so. I'm saying to you that if you are not satisfied with the parent-teacher conference time allotment, you can schedule an additional meeting with parents to go over your child's report.
My concern is not, I just mentioned that as a reference. My point is that we don't get a breakdown of what these reading assessments entail for our child. So in other words, even New York State, when they take New York State, when we get the results later, they tell us where they were weak, where they were strong. We don't get that here at all. I don't think I've ever gotten it. And so that is why I'm continuing to push for reading programs that will give us real-time feedback. Cause also too, by the time we get the assessment from running record, it's three, three and a half months later, you can't catch your child of, you know, where they may have been in October if you don't get that information until December. So we need something that in real time, the parents, and we shouldn't have to chase it. It shouldn't have to be, oh, I'm a hands-on mom, so I find out what my kid is doing and where they are, what they need. We need something where in real time, parents can get regular, just like with math. In, in math, we get the, the tests, we know where they are, you know, what they got wrong, this and that. We need something where parents can assist their kids in an ongoing manner throughout the school year, not just, you know, quarterly or in February for part.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crick. Anyone else?
Super quick question, I promise. So I just got a message from someone asking, um, they're used to getting, um, notifications from the district via the app, but now that they've switched the app, is there going to be some way of like, like, can, can community members, um, join the Parent Square app? Probably not, but, um, yes.
We could find out about that. Right now, we're using, um, people who are in our student management system, e-school, which is what generates it. Those are our parents. We would have to, um, have more dialogue with Parent Square about people who are not part of our student management system.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Anyone else? All right. Our next regular meeting of the Board of Education and another audit committee meeting is Tuesday, October 14th at 7:30 PM at Gotham Avenue School. May I have a motion to adjourn, adjourn the public meeting? Thank you, Mr. Ramos, second, Ms. Palmer, second, Ms., oh, Ms., oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Palmer, and second, Ms. Douglas, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Have a good night.